Welcome to the Olathe Board of Education Meeting.
Hi, we are the Student Council members of Briarwood Elementary School.
At Briarwood, we believe in treating others with respect and doing our best.
Go there's!
Well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this October meeting of the Olathe Board of Education to order, and ask our board clerk if she will call the roll, please.
Ms. Ashley, here. Mr. Churchman?
Here.
Dr. Drummond?
Here.
Mr. Gilmore?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Mr. Poland?
Here.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Here.
And we have a quorum to conduct our business. In just a moment, Dr. All is going to introduce our guests, our special guests that we have for the Pledge of Allegiance. But before we do that, I'd like to ask if everyone would please stand with me, and I'd like to observe a moment of silence if we could. You know, there's been school shootings in the news here in the last several weeks and months, and we'd just like to take a moment tonight to honor the memory of students and others who have been killed at school, and those families and communities that are suffering from those things. And then, Dr. All, if you'll make a few remarks after that moment of silence, after our Pledge of Allegiance time. So would you join me in standing, please, for a moment? Thank you. Would you remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, Dr. All?
Would Daniel and Mackenzie please come forward? We have two students here from Sunnyside Elementary School, and after they lead us in the pledge, I'll tell you a little bit more about them.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, first of all, we have a little bit of information about Mackenzie and Daniel, and they're here representing 77 student-strong, Sunnyside Sun Runners running team. And you can see that they have their shirts on here. And they've been in training for the past six weeks with the goal of participating in the 8th Annual Jared Koons Memorial Pumpkin Run. And the Sun Runners are going to give you a little information here in a minute, I think, from their principal, David Carney. But I found out from Daniel that he particularly likes math in school, and he did admit that he is a very good student. And the Mackenzie is the Student Council President from Sunnyside and really likes school. So you can see that these are two young leaders in their elementary school community, and we have a lot of good things to look forward to from them as they go through our school system. And I'd like to acknowledge David Carney, just to come up for a second, because they kind of, this is his marketing technique, they kind of like to work on promoting an event that they have. And some of you may realize that the Jared Koons Memorial Pumpkin Run began eight years ago, and the family of Jared Koons, his dad is here tonight, and his dad did email me to let me know that how much this family respects and appreciates the ongoing efforts of David Carney, even though that started at Black Bob, went to Tomahawk, right? And then Sunnyside, that he's helped keep this event going forward in memory of Jared, and to sustain that over those eight years is so important. So I appreciate Mr. Koons letting me know that and giving an opportunity to acknowledge David. And David, you're going to give a quick promo, right?
Quick promo. You know, we've had a great time the last four years at Sunnyside with our running team. In fact, the running teams are starting to spread across the district to promote student fitness and wellness, and we're happy about that. We're going to have Clearwater Creek, we're going to have Cedar Creek, we're going to have Haven Croft, we're going to have Briarwood, lots of schools joining us sharing. So with all those kids out there, we thought it'd be a great thing if Dr. All and all of you are our guests on October 14th for the 8th Annual Pumpkin Run. And I'm going to pass out some information to you about that. So thank you for letting us be here, Daniel. Thank you for supporting wellness in our district by letting us do programs like the Sun Runners.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We want to give... (applause). I think Daniel and Mackenzie do have some guests with them. Mackenzie, you want to go first?
Uh, this is my mom, Cindy Madsen.
There's Cindy, Daniel.
Good dynamite, ma'am.
This is my mom, Carol Offwick.
Well, thank you very much for leading us in the pledge tonight. We really appreciate your time, and we're feeling challenged by being invited to the Run-Walk. Do I hear a motion to send a representative? Mr. Poland?
Our president needs a representative.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, thank you very much. Dr. All, would you please give us an overview of our meeting tonight?
Yes. First of all, I might just share a couple of comments in relationship to the recent tragic events, and just reiterate that this school district, school board, past and present, our staff take student safety as our highest priority. And this is one of those topics that is probably the most worrisome for parents and worrisome for staff, and definitely worrisome for us and for me, and giving a lot of thought to this. And one of the things that we do have in Olathe, we have been a leader way prior to many of these tragedies in the early 90s in developing a crisis management plan under the leadership of Dr. Bob Hull. School teams have crisis plans. We coordinate very closely with all of our emergency personnel in the county, meeting with them monthly, and do drills. Sometimes people wonder why we do some of the drills that we do. It's sometimes uncomfortable to do those drills in the school, and to practice that with our children and staff members. But I think some of the recent events let us know why we have to do those multiple drills in so many ways. With that said, I just want to let the board and the community know that we are evaluating everything that we're doing even once more, and if there are some things that we can do to address any additional safety features, we're looking at each of those in a viable way, trying to balance the kind of school environment that we want for all of our children in a safe environment. So just would like to let you know that this is on our minds, as well as I know it's on many people's minds as they watch the medium. With that said, our information presentations tonight are going to begin. We're going to launch, officially launch, our new website, and then that's going to come at the end of a DVD that I'm going to show you, because this is our brand-new recruitment video for our, as we go out to try to attract the best teachers for our students. And I think you'll be pleased to see that. And it'll go from the video, and then the video, you're going to see links to our website. Following that, there's going to be some additional infomercials, short, sweet, on our career cruising, our new student academic career planning resource of electronic student portfolios and access to career and college information. And then a new program, also See Yourself in College, trying to identify students who may not see themselves in college at a younger age, and giving them some experiences in 7th grade to get to a college campus. These are some exciting new initiatives we are to enhance opportunities for our students for academic excellence. There'll be some preliminary September 20th enrollment report information, and some preliminary financial impact on that. This information still is not final, but we're working on that very quickly. There will be an update on junior high enrollment growth with some updated information from previous information reported to the board, and the changes reflected in September 20th. And then there will be the annual energy report. Following that, after a comfort break, we will have recognitions at about 6:45 and awards. Those will be identified at that time. And then at 7 o'clock, the board will entertain public comments. Following public comments, the board will take action on consent agenda items that may be approved without detailed discussion, because there's been prior information or prior discussion at previous board meetings. Any item may be removed for separate discussion if that is so desired by the superintendent or board member. In addition, following that, will be specific action items on the addition of graphing calculators in our schools, furniture bids, audiovisual equipment, technology service and maintenance agreements, as well as a contract proposal for network copiers. The board will also have action tonight on naming of elementary school number 33, and also appointing a delegate to the KSB Delegate Assembly. Following that, the board will set some additional special meeting dates to further study the findings of the Bond Task Force and other capital improvement needs for this district that might, at some point in the future, be part of a bond package. And then, following that, there's additional future action items that the board receives that will indicate action in the future. And then additional written information reports. The board will recess to executive session to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel, protect their privacy, to consult with an attorney on matters deemed privileged, attorney-client relationships, and for preliminary discussion related to the acquisition of real property to protect the public interest. And following that will be adjournment. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. All. Board members, I saw a quote today from Abraham Lincoln that says, "If you give me six hours to cut down a tree, I'll spend four hours sharpening the axe first." And with that in mind, we're going to go right into our agenda. We have a long agenda tonight. Our information presentation's a number of brief presentations to be made here. Item 2.01 on our agenda is new school district website? Or are we skipping that one to the end?
No, we're going to start with the DVD. So I just want to show you this. This is a great example of a DVD that's been created by our Community Relations Department, our Technology Division, and our Human Resources Department, and Graphics and Printing, together in a collaborative team. So this has all been done in-house, and I want you to see what we're ready to take on the road to try to attract the best for Olathe.
One quick comment before we show the video. If you'll see at the bottom of the screen, some additional links to the video. We have the HR website and documents. One of the unique features, and one of the things we're proud of, is that when we hand this DVD out on recruitment trips, our candidates can click and go right to our website, which has the application, and then also other documents such as salary schedule benefits information. So I just wanted you to be aware of those additional features.
Being named one of the 100 best places to live in America by Money Magazine tells just part of the story. Olathe, Kansas is one of the fastest-growing places in the Midwest, cherishing its small community feel while welcoming all of the fun and excitement that comes with being part of a large metropolitan area. Located just outside of Kansas City, residents have access to a wide variety of resources.
(audio break) Touchdown, Kansas City!
Big-time sports, beautiful shopping and restaurant districts, and all kinds of recreational options are just a short drive away. Community, it's one of the first things that comes to mind when you ask someone in Olathe about their hometown.
We're a school district that is very family-friendly, and our community is family-friendly. Our community supports our public schools through multiple bond elections for providing teachers with great resources. That includes technology, great facilities, instructional materials, and the community prides itself on quality staff, and they want to seek the very best. Olathe is a place that's been growing for 40 years and has at least 30 more years of rapid growth ahead of it. Anyone coming to Olathe now is going to have a great future by coming here.
Olathe is a quickly-growing district, adding 500 to 800 students every year for the past 25 years. That amounts to the population of one or two elementary schools each year.
I wanted some job security, I wanted a good pay, good benefits, so a growing district was what I was looking for. I liked the opportunities at the new schools, like I'm at Ravenwood Elementary, which is a brand-new school, and it was an opportunity that you don't usually have in some other districts, because it had all the new technology, and it was just a good way to go into a fresh building where everybody's new. So that's exciting to be at a place where they are excited about growing with the way technology's growing, because these kids got to know how to use that.
I was drawn to Olathe because of their emphasis in technology, and they had a very progressive approach. When we've moved to this idea of a smart teacher that is connected to a video projector, so anything I see on my computer, my students are going to be able to see, you know, larger-than-life. The other thing we've been using a little bit more of is the inner-write pads, which is a wireless pad that allows me to click my PowerPoint presentations, but also to be able to write, as if I was writing on the board, the students see it on the screen. And that's been pretty neat, because within science, there's a lot of new animations on the web, and I'll go to that website, do an animation, and then I'll freeze-frame it, if you will, and I'll talk and be able to circle this, hey, were you paying attention to this, did you notice this? But that's something in Olathe I've really been impressed by, that they're willing to ask the questions, hey, does this work for us now? Is it possible for us to do something better than we did before? Some districts aren't asking those kind of questions. They're like, well, how much does it cost? And I mean, we're involved with cost, but the issue is, is about student learning, and will this enhance it? Well, then, let's find a way.
As a teacher, I like what's available, all the resources. I really am impressed with the IRC, the resources that are there. You can call over there and say, this is the project that I'm doing, what do you have? And sometimes they would even put a lot of it together for you, and all you have to do is implement it. And so the resources, you always have to have resources, and Olathe seems to have a great handle on providing all of that. And with my children having gone through this district, I know about how excellent the schools are. I know how great the teachers are, and there's a synergy that's been developed here that carries from elementary all the way through junior high, through high school. And I think that's one of the basic things that's very necessary for a student to have a good education.
(music) I can learn, yes I can, many, many things if I want to. You can learn, yes you can, many, many things if you want to.
Many of these reasons that educators choose to come to Olathe are the same reasons that educators choose to stay in Olathe, keeping our retention rates high.
(music) Many things if you want to.
In the Olathe School District, we take great pride in our staff development program, particularly our staff development for new educators, because it is so comprehensive. Every session, teachers are able to engage with other teachers, other new teachers in the district. They're able to talk with their IRT, they're able to listen and participate in a very interactive way, and then immediately take that information back the very next day and implement it. Surrounding districts do not have the Instructional Resource Teacher Program, and when the IRT role was developed, it was designed with the goal in mind of not only recruiting the best teachers to Olathe, but retaining the best teachers in Olathe. But it is certainly a team approach between the IRT and that new teacher.
It's a team effort. That is, that is a fact for each school in Olathe. Everyone has an integral part. Everyone has a vital part of the education, the job. And my job is perfect. It falls right into 7:30 to 5:00 of what I need, or if I need to work later, I can. If I need to work earlier, I can. It's flexible. The district gives you that separation of work and of your outside life. You need to be able to go home, you need to be able to not think about work, you need to be able to be with your family, be with your significant others, and relax. Once you get to work, it's full-time, go, go, go.
Being a successful district, providing an excellent education to students, preparing students for the future, requires a lot of support outside the classroom. These would be paras, school aides, secretaries...
Olathe district schools?
Custodians, maintenance personnel, technology, human resource management. You have to have facilities to educate students, keeping the facilities clean and suitable for the students to get their excellent education, making sure the funds that are there, making sure that the quality staff is getting hired. So it takes an entire team, and the classified team members are a critical, essential part of that team.
Behind the scenes, the Olathe District's team approach helps keep our schools at the top year in and year out. But if you really want to hear what our school community is like, just ask the people we serve.
Well, I'm really impressed with everyone in the school district, because since I am deaf, all of the teachers have not allowed my deafness to be a barrier for communication. They're not treating me as a deaf person. They're treating me as they do other hearing persons. And they focus on my individual skills, and they're very immersed with thinking about the students' individual needs, their personal skills. I'm really impressed with all the teachers.
I'm glad that they gave me the opportunity to learn what I wanted to learn. They gave me the choice to do orchestra or band.
I hear about school systems where the orchestra is not offered, or, you know, they've had to cut their drama program or their art program, and I've really, it really makes me appreciate the fact that here in the Olathe school system, they do have those opportunities.
I really like the teachers. I've never really had a problem with any of the teachers. They, like, they're all really friendly, like, I've got to, I've got to know every school teacher that I've ever had.
I love school because I like Ms. Marilla, because she is a very good teacher. I love school, I love my friends a lot.
We've set up some social groups that, you know, in the past years that have really helped, and I feel like it was great. I mean, whether it was going to lunch with a few friends in a smaller group so that they could get to know Haley, or at recess, just making sure she always had a friend, a buddy, of just anyone to get to know her on a different level, other than just in the classroom.
I've always felt like the district has taken the steps needed to prepare and hire the right kind of teachers.
Yeah, a lot of them have been really nice, way better than the ones at my old school.
I'm up there, you know, a couple times a week helping out, and I love all of the teachers, and it feels like home. It feels, I feel really comfortable there.
All my teachers have been really nice, and there's not one teacher that I haven't liked.
This has been a nice idea.[1346.16][1346.16](applause). I want to give certainly credit to especially Tim Phillips that we worked with in Community Relations and Video Production, and some others that worked with him to help pull this off. We began the idea of putting recruitment materials on a disk rather than a paper folder, actually about four years ago. We saw an interactive product in another state where they had just access to the website, that's all it provided. We've seen a few since then that have a video, and that's all they provide. And it's nice to be in a position where we now have the state-of-the-art that has all of those in one piece that we can hand out to people as they come to by our fair at a convention or at a recruitment event on campus, and we can give it to people in those screening interview times, and they could take it home in whatever environment they like, and either pop it in the TV if they just want to see the video piece, or put it in their computer, and actually link to our site and to the documents, and choose what they want to download. So it's been about a year in production to try and get it to work. It is also, we have the Spanish translation, if you prefer that to audio, we have that available as well. And very, very pleased to be able to roll this out this fall. We think it'll make a tremendous difference. If a picture is worth a thousand words, then you've seen in about eight minutes probably what it would have taken us hours to present, and not with near the clarity. So we're very pleased.
Great.
Could the individual staff members that have been a part of this video, please stand right now? Come on, Marlene? Kevin?
That's the website.
Oh, that's the website, okay. I'm not being clear. Oh, Tim's in the closet.
Tim keeps our TV production running as well.
Okay. Now we're going to transition, because we link them to our new website, and then we'll recognize them. I'm sorry, you were giving me a blank look.
Zinni helped with the Spanish translation, too, and she's in the audience.
When they click the link, it takes them to the Human Resources website. There's Tim.
We just went off the air for a few seconds there.
Technical difficulties. When they click the link, it takes them to the Human Resources website, where again, they can search openings, they can apply online, and all those other things that we've been using the website for. But we also have, by clicking the logo, the link to our new district website.
Great.
Okay, Rita and I are standing up here, but that's so we can brag about the people who are really responsible for the new look to the district website. A lot of people just opened up their computers and saw this one day, but this also was, what, about a year in the making? And it started with lots and lots of research, lots of focus groups, lots of surveys, just trying to figure out what the users would find most useful and most beneficial in the new website. And then lots and lots of design work, and lots and lots of web architecture, and all the latest trends. I can't even begin to describe all the work that went into the team that put together the new website. If you've been through it, you've probably noticed that it's arranged a lot differently. There's opportunities, for example, here we've got all the Bond Task Force materials that people can go to and look at, see the video of the presentation. There's a Board of Education button, has all your board agendas, policies, and procedures, anything anybody ever would ever want to know about the Board of Education, and lots of other neat stuff. And they worked with all the departments in the district to get their latest information and the things they most wanted on it. And now, it's our pleasure to introduce the Web Design Team. That's, would you please stand up? At the end is Bettina Lindner, Graphic Communications. You want to introduce your people?
Next is Brandon Lane. He's part of the Online Services Department. He's one of our web architects. Kevin Roper, next in line. He's our senior web architect. We're very lucky to have both of those folks.
Marlene Colgan in the Community Relations Department, who with Nicole Askwood, standing next to her, did most of the market research, and also was the one who did moving hundreds and hundreds of pages of material from the old site to the new site. We'd like to give them a hand.
Thank you all very much. We know that was many, many hours of hard work, and it's really, it shows up in the results. I noticed it the other day before the announcement was made about it, and I wrote Dr. All an email and said, "That website looks wonderful." So thank you very much. Our next item is Agenda Item 2.02 on Career Cruising. Dr. Banikowski is going to begin this presentation.
Yes, we're really pleased to have the opportunity to share with you, and I'll pop this open so it's all ready. One of the student learning targets, and under the board initiative of student learning, is that 100% of our 8th graders will develop a six-year academic and career plan. Let me demonstrate and show to you our previous look to our student portfolio. We are very proud of it. But now, let me show you today's look to our academic and career plan that has been put into place with a lot of leadership, and especially from Dr. Ann Sanders and Jack DeGregge and Shirk. They're going to share with you some information, as well as one of our high school counselors. Let me turn it over to them.
Good evening.
Good evening.
What is it that every parent in every educational system desires for every child? The answer, an individualized, personalized education plan that assists every child to reach their highest academic potential. The Olathe School District has made great strides toward that lofty goal, and our latest tool in our, in our supply closet happens to be a tool called Career Cruising. Career Cruising is a web-based guidance program that can be accessed 24/7 from any computer worldwide that has Internet connectivity. As a part of our, a school-to-career grant in 1997, we began the paper-and-pencil six-year plan for all 8th graders and all students from grades 8 through 12. And then, the paper-and-pencil method gave way to another web-based system called ECOS. But ECOS did not have the capability for customization, and so we began an intensive search to find what would be a sophisticated and robust system that would meet the needs of the Olathe School District. So, in the spring of 2006, at Olathe Northwest, 120 parents, students, staff, including counselors, began to research... began to research and to evaluate the top four web-based systems in the nation. And they did this against a rubric. Across all four of those various groups and stakeholder groups, Career Cruising ranked number one and top. We brought in Career Cruising and the top three for the counselors to really grill them, because the counselors are the ones that are going to be the point guards or the implementers of the system. And they were the ones that would know the administrative side and what the capabilities would have to be. Once again, Career Cruising came up as the top and unanimous choice of that particular group. We are very proud to say, as of today, that every secondary school has an action plan that entails the possibility and the probability and the reality that every student in grades eight through 12 will have had an experience with Career Cruising by the time that we have parent and teacher conferences in the fall. This is in a two, you know, a couple of weeks, October 19, '20. And what Gretchen Schirck or Dr. Schirck is going to do is tell you about four of the major components of our system.
Thank you. And I'm going to do this fairly quickly because we want to give Janet an opportunity to actually take you online and see the product itself. It's very robust and very exciting. But just to highlight a few of the components, one part that the students start with is the interest in skills assessments, and that gives students feedback in terms of the kinds of things that they are good at doing and what also interests them. And the part that I particularly like is the fact that it tells them why and why not. There's a match between their interests and their skills. The career profiles that are in-depth, they're thorough and updated, there are hundreds of these. And students access these through search features, and they're also printer-friendly, so the students could print these and save them for future reference. There are 900 multimedia interviews, and these provide practical realities for the students in a media format. College and financial aid information, and also a resume builder, which I skipped a bullet. But I also want to mention particularly and draw your attention to the electronic career portfolio, because that was the piece of Career Cruising that we were the most excited about. And actually, the students, by going through all the components of Career Cruising, build their career portfolio that then builds, feeds into their resume. And so they can come out with a professional resume as a result of doing all the components of Career Cruising. So without further delay, I want to give Janet an opportunity to actually walk you through Career Cruising. Janet? I am honored and very excited to get to be the person this evening to share with you what I recently have been able to share with my students at Olathe North, and all other counselors across the district have been recently sharing with their students, too, in grades eight through 12. You are looking at, and we're going to go through this live, so we're going to kind of be at the mercy of the Internet and its speed tonight, but I want to show you exactly what the students are seeing, and hopefully taking home and sharing with their parents, too, because many pieces of this are as attractive to the parents as they are to the students. When they go online at www.careercruising.com, this is the homepage they come up with, and each one of our schools then is personalized. The student will log it in by the name of their school. So I'm going to log in for mine, Olathe North. And then the password for each of the schools is the school's mascot. And so, I've just told you that ours was Eagles, but I think you probably figured that out. All right, and we're ready now to start Career Cruising. What this is going to bring up then are, down the side, four different components. And as I told my students at North, the very first thing I want you to do is to go into Career Matchmaker. So when we go into this, it first of all wants to make sure that it can personalize every page, so you're being addressed by your first name. So once again, I'll put in my information. And it's going to say, "Do you want to do a matchmaker session?" And we sure do, because we want to find out, what is the careers, what are some of those careers that I'm most already drawn to, or I have a natural affinity for, or I don't even maybe realize that I've got the talent to do? So what it's going to do is bring up for the student a series of work scenarios. Would you like working with people? Would you like working with data? Do you want to work outside? Do you want to work inside? Do you like working with children? And it's going to present a number of work scenarios. For the junior high student, we ask that they do at least the first 39 questions. At the end of the 39, it'll say, "Would you like to do some more?" And we've encouraged the high school students to do another approximate 40 of these career scenarios. To each one of them, they have one of these five responses that they can make. After they've completed that, then it says, "Do you want to save your results?" Well, sure, for all the work you've done, you want to. So it's going to take you then to your portfolio. Now, each of the portfolios for every individual student in Olathe is personally secure. They've each been given, as we did at North, a personalized card with their user ID and login. So I'm going to put mine in at this time. And my secure password. And now I'm ready to not only save those results, but I'm able to find out now the secrets to all of this. What are my things that I'm most drawn to? Well, I tried really hard when I was doing this to kind of defer from what I knew probably was going to be the obvious, but it still brought up my top 10 career choices for me. And I told the students when I presented to them, not surprising, I've already been a high school teacher, I'm currently a career counselor, but I've always kind of wondered what it might be like to work in a prison, okay? So I said, "Let's go to see what a parole officer might be like." That's one I hadn't tried yet. So we went over to this, and again, these students can click into any of these careers. So we're looking again at a parole or probation officer. It tells them why there were matches according to what their indicators were. You can click on job description and find out what the description of that job would be. You could find out about the work environment you might be daily facing with working conditions. Of course, all the students were most interested in, "Show me the money." And they wanted to find out about earnings. So this will give you some generic information about earnings, but if you scroll down, you can find out for your state what's the current job outlook and what are the possible wages I can make. But maybe I'm not always going to live in beautiful Kansas, so I can click on any state in the Union and find out that current data about the job outlook and what those wages might be. Well, maybe I've read this now and think maybe being a parole officer is not the hottest thing I want to do. So I can look at other related jobs, and they'll bring that to me, too. As Dr. Schirck mentioned, I can also go into, and no matter what the career is, and I can click on this person's name and see a live video clip of what someone who actually does this career and what they like about it. We're going to go over to another layer out of the matchmaker, and we're going to go over to the career section of this now. And there's four layers of this. We can click on the index for careers. And, again, we'll be at the mercy of the Internet a little bit, and we can go straight to one I'm curious about. What would engineering be like? Or maybe what would nursing be like? Or occupational therapy? Or the field of legal systems and so forth? They can click on it that way. If that's not quite maybe what they want, they're not sure what they want, then maybe they can click on it by a school subject. Maybe they really know they particularly maybe like foreign languages. They've gotten into the study of that. And so, what could I do if I continue my study of foreign languages? This will bring up all the possible careers, but what I really like about it as a counselor's point of view, to encourage that post-secondary education, is that it's going to tell me, "I could get this first job maybe with just a high school diploma and maybe two years of an associate degree." But some tell me immediately, "I'm going to have to have a university degree, possibly even a master's degree." So that's another way that I can take a look at this thing, is by my school subject. I can also look by a career cluster. For example, if I want to just go into maybe a general area I'm interested in, maybe the legal field possibly, I can click on that. And it's going to do the same thing, too, and show me all those same features. We're going to go over now to schools. Possible places I could go after high school. I can click on Search for Schools, and the first layer it's going to bring up is to do it geographically. Let's take a look at good old Kansas. And when you click on any state in the Union, and we'll look at Kansas, it's going to bring up a direct link to every career, technical, two-year, and four-year program in the state. You can narrow it to just the four-year ones or the two-year ones. And these are direct links to those schools' websites that you can get to. Let's look for another way to look at these schools. Maybe I want to look at it based on its programs that it offers. So if we go in this way, you can go in again by, maybe I'm interested again, that law enforcement field. Whoa, law enforcement and security, there it is. I might take a look at that. And I scroll down this, and whoa, this is the one I'm going to tell you every high school student thinks they want to be now. They all want to be on a CSI investigator. So we go in, and this, when they see how much science they need, they sometimes think differently. "Oh, you have to know about science and math." Okay, well, this will show them, this will show them every state in the Union that's got a degree program, again, in forensic science and technology. Kansas not there, so Mom and Dad, I'm packing my bags and headed maybe, oh, Hawaii sounds nice. So the reality of that is there. Let's look at another way of searching for schools here. We can go again, if we want to, to the school selector. Most of them would begin as undergraduates, so we would go there. And we can put in different parameters to help us look for a school. This is probably with Mom and Dad's encouragement. Maybe public school, private school. Maybe we'll go over on the side here and maybe look at it based on its admissions difficulty. What's the typical entering ACT freshman score? Maybe I'm a student with a special education IEP. Would they honor that? Mom and Dad want to look at it based on the sticker price, I'm sure, okay? Maybe they want to do it by enrollment, the size of it. I will tell you, all of my athletes at Olathe North were very interested in this page. What schools give athletic scholarships in the men's and women's category? I had a young man come in last week, wanted to know if I could help him find one that had a fishing team. He has his own web-based business where he sells lures, and he was looking for that. We did find one, but he was also pretty amazed to find out, here's the schools that give that ultimate frisbee scholarship that he might have been interested in, too. So another way of looking at it. I think probably one of the greatest features, though, under the school section of this is one that parents are very interested in, and that is, "Show me the money." Is there financial aid or scholarships for my student? Well, they can go in under the financial aid selector, and they can give it very specific parameters, male, female, different disabilities they might have. They might be able to do it based on their GPA. They might be able to do it based on what majors I'm interested in, several other features. And it's going to go out on the world wide web and bring them all the scholarship based on the narrowing of specifics that they give it to search for. But if they want to look at it one other way and have just maybe a more quick, rapid-fire way of locating possible scholarships, they can go in again to that financial aid and just look at the financial aid selector. And again, "Bring me all the engineering scholarship, all the nursing scholarships." So it will go out on the web and bring all those applications and information about them, or it'll also do it by the name of a specific scholarship if maybe their parents have one at work they want them to access. I want to spend one more minute with you over in the portfolio area. This is the one that gave me my career assessment information. And as Dr. Schirck referred to, there's also the resume builder feature. This one, to me, is phenomenal, as kids apply for that first job or they have to send in that college essay. This will go through a series of templates that we hope that they update every year, especially as they, again, start work experiences. They can put that in there. What kind of community service have they done? Different kinds of awards and achievements that they have accrued throughout all of their secondary years, extracurricular activities. They build in all those templates. And then, when they have those in there, and again, they can update them at will whenever they need to, they can go over to, they can choose the style they want this printed out. Would you like your resume printed professionally, elegantly, or in a contemporary style? You can even take a look at an example of how it might look. Once yours is set up, it will totally go out onto all those templates, gather the information in the right category, and print it out in whatever style looks good to you. So it's a great feature for that. I will tell you, though, as high school counselors, as we first looked at this product, I think what was most engaging for all of us was the education planner. And this is where our eighth grade students, a little bit later this year, will go into this. They'll click on the fact that next year I'm a ninth grader, and in fact, I'm putting together my whole, the rest of my high school plan, and even after that. They will be able to go in and no longer have to record it on paper that hopefully is going to make it to the right high school. But instead, it's all here electronically, and with a touch of a button, we can transfer that student electronically to whatever high school they're going into. I will tell you personally, for many ELL students across our district, one other feature that I want to make sure that you're aware of about Career Cruising, that definitely was attractive to all of us, was the fact that many of our students whose language was not first English, but maybe Hispanic possibly, one click of this changes the entire, all the layers of programming into Spanish for those students to be able to work on, too, as they make that transition to English. Recently, at Olathe North, as a way to expose as many students to this as quickly as we could, because, again, we have a lot of seniors very excited about this, we started during Thursday morning seminars, not by choice necessarily, but because we have a wonderful TV production studio, we've been hosting The Breakfast with Bocknik Show. And each Thursday morning, different things. And we had a very extensive one about three weeks ago where our students were introduced to all much more in-depth features of this. And I wanted you two to make sure that you could enjoy Breakfast with Bocknik, so I know you have your copies up there. Thank you for the time this evening.
I feel like I need to take a deep breath. Thank you, Ms. Bocknik, very much. Any questions or comments?
Found somebody who can talk faster than Allison.
Yeah. Thank you all very much for that presentation. What a wonderful, Ms. Wuhan?
I did have a couple of questions. One was, in just tracking the success of the program, after our students get out of high school, there's, I'm sure there's a piece, as extensive as this is.
There is a feedback program, and we honestly can, the vendor asked us, "How long did we want to keep a file active?" Because it could almost be permanent without even an opportunity to have to pay anything more. So we can, and some of the persons that they said, from other organizations that had, you know, bought this product, that people have kept it six years and that parents are using it, and it's for one, you know, price, and it's a very reasonable price that we have been able to get this. So there is a feedback loop for us.
Second question would be, once students know, starting in the eighth grade, and they start those courses that they're taking, is there a piece, and I'm sure this program maybe does not do that, is there a piece that can be tied then back into the community for students to do mentoring within the community, once they, if that possibility is there, once they know that they're at this point in working toward their career?
Well, there is that piece where they can keep track of their community service. And I don't know about, you know, the mentoring piece, but when they become an adult, and some persons have, you know, followed all the way through their four years of college, and then actually use this instrument in order to send out their resume, they have been able to, you know, show and update what they have done in community service, mentoring, any of the kinds of experiences that they've had that would make them more marketable.
Okay. Thank you.
Just one general comment regarding this, and my appreciation to the staff for being proactive, proactive leadership in identifying a need and meeting the challenge and finding the resources that will allow our students to fulfill our vision statement, which is students prepared for their future. So, great job. Very impressive.
Well, we're about to move from one exciting program to another, the See Yourself in College program. Dr. Banikowski?
Just heard about students having the opportunity to develop an academic and a career plan. And for many students, college is part of that academic plan to lead them to that career. But for many talented students, they do not see themselves in the college picture. Well, we have a program for that as well, that we initiated last year after just a conversation with some professors from Emporia State University. We grabbed onto an idea. And I'd like to introduce you to Margot Twaddell, who is our Assistant Principal at Indian Trail Junior High, who's going to give you a little overview of this exciting program. And we have some great guests this evening, too. We would like to begin just by thanking you for the opportunity to highlight this wonderful initiative called, that we call, "College Put Yourself in the Picture." I'm going to have trouble following Janet's fast-paced there, so I'm not going to be quite as fast. About a year ago, we did have discussions with Dr. Banikowski and also with other staff from Teaching and Learning, discussing some research regarding closing the achievement gap. This research focused on the fact that many of our underserved youth do not strive to be in advanced classes or to raise their achievement levels, simply because they do not understand or they do not have prior knowledge about attending college. In fact, some of our young people have never stepped on a college campus. So they do not know how to prepare for college, they do not know how to access financial aid and scholarships and so forth. So with this information in mind, we set out to formulate a pilot project last year that we called, "College Put Yourself in the Picture." We identified about 15 seventh graders from Indian Trail and also 15 seventh graders at Oregon Trail that were recommended as students that might benefit academically by learning more about the opportunity of going to college. So tonight, I brought a couple students from Indian Trail that are going to help explain kind of from their perspective some of the things that came out of the program for them last year. And I also brought Brenda Shaw, who... And I also brought Brenda Shaw, who was the facilitator of the program at Oregon Trail, and Brenda is a counselor at Oregon Trail. So I would like to introduce Kena Winton and Katie Walters, who are now eighth graders at Indian Trail and participated in the program last year. And Kena is going to start, and this is kind of scary, but I think we're ready.
In this college group, we were able to visit a couple of colleges, think about going to college, and began to think about what we're going to do when we finish school. I was a pretty shy seventh grader, just getting used to junior high, so I was not sure what to expect from the group. Some things that I learned were that I need to involve myself in school, and that if I want to earn a scholarship, I need to be able to say I've done community service. So this year, I joined the volleyball team and applied to be a Cougar Ambassador, which is a leadership and service organization. During the visits to Emporia State and KU, I realized how much diversity each college had, that made me feel more comfortable of the idea of going to college.
Good.
I thought that the group was really fun to be part of. I think maybe Ms. Twaddell invited me, because while I was a leader in seventh grade class, it was not always in the most positive way. This year, I joined the volleyball team and also applied for Cougar Ambassador and K's Club. The college group was fun, and it was exciting to get to go to the campus. We even got to go inside Allen Field House at KU. I think the best thing for me was that the group and information inspired me to be, do better, because it gave me a chance to really seriously think about my future. I know that other kids in the group also were inspired, and we all made a really good connection with our school.
With this success behind us, we were really excited to hear about the opportunity to expand the program to reach more students. Our eighth graders that had been in the program were asking to continue the program, they wanted to keep meeting and visiting some more campuses, and then we also wanted to start some more seventh graders in the program. So we are thrilled to hear that our application to the State Farm Good Neighbor Citizenship Grant was accepted. On top of that already generous $5,000 corporate grant, our local State Farm agents, Harlan Parker and Deb Sweeney, added another $1,000 to the grant. This funding means that we can continue to work with two groups at Indian Trail and also at Oregon Trail, and that we can also add two new groups of seventh graders, and we're planning to do that at Santa Fe Trail and Pioneer Trail this year. We certainly want to express our heartfelt gratitude and appreciation to State Farm for their generosity and care in helping us to close the achievement gap. And Brenda and I would also like to thank you for the privilege of working with such great kids and great families at our schools. We would like to present, is Deb Sweeney here yet?
Not yet, not yet.
Not yet? Okay. We would like to present a T-shirt. Do you want to model the T-shirts, ladies? Can you turn around and show them the, our new T-shirt for this year? There we go, okay? And we would like to present you a T-shirt now, Harlan.
Thank you. Could you run it?
Yeah. Got some help here. And we also, if you have any questions about our group or our goals?
Questions or comments?
Just a comment that, you know, so often we look at our scores, our academic scores, and that doesn't always tell the real story about developing our students. And so, this is a great example of how important it is to make connections with our students through adults making those connections and caring about the future of these young people. So, congratulations to that, to the fact that there's a sponsorship with it, but also that the program just before this demonstrated the caring that is there, and this does also. And the two young ladies that presented, congratulations to you for stepping forward and presenting, but also for taking the initiative in your lives to reach out to this kind of program. So, thank you.
They've done a wonderful job. I'm really, really proud of them.
Yeah, thank you. Just curious, how will you utilize their experience in the future? Will they mentor some new seventh graders, or are you going to take advantage of their experience?
You know, I'm going to do that, at least in my school. I don't know how the other school did. In fact, this past year, with my 15 seventh graders, there were some eighth graders, there were two eighth graders, and there were two ninth graders, that I also included in the group. The two ninth graders in particular were very much like these students. They really, maybe were not as focused as they should have been in seventh grade, and even in eighth, started to realize, oh, my gosh, you know, I need to get myself together. And they enjoyed the visits. They kept telling me they enjoyed them more than the seventh graders, and I don't know if that was true or not, but they were really latching on to all that information about financial aid and how do you get a scholarship. And, you know, they weren't sure the seventh graders were listening, but as you can tell from what the girls reported, they were listening. They heard that for a scholarship, they needed to be involved in community service, and they found a way, they started looking at this school as a place that they could start to do that. So, yeah, I'm sure that we will be using them as mentors.
Good. Thank you, Mrs. Twaddell. Thank you, Kena and Katie, for coming tonight. Appreciate that. Our next agenda item is our September 20th enrollment report, along with preliminary financial impact. I believe Chris Grohlup is going to begin this presentation. Good evening, Chris.
Good evening there. Al started, and then Gary Diener will fill you in on the rest of the financial implications. Hold on for just a second. Tonight, we're here to just give you, based on the September 20th numbers, kind of a look at what the student body is like for Alatha 2005, or 2006, and how it's changed from 2005. Slide of some of our students. Basically, this year, as we've always talked, we've been talking about, Alatha's continually growing. This year, no exception. The final number from technology is 25,591. This is a 940 student increase from last year. This is our second biggest increase in the history of the Alatha School District. Last year's total of 1,050 was the biggest, and this year's the second biggest. This 940 numbers, excuse me, represents the increase over last year. It doesn't represent all the new students that moved into our district, it just is the new students that moved in minus the students that left. And so, there were actually a lot more new students to our district. One of the slides that we've kind of been showing you there is the breakdown by grades there. Last year, again, only one grade above 2,000 was the kindergarten class last year at 2027. This year, we've got three grades over 2,000. The first, this year's first grade class is the largest at 2071. Secondary students there, the senior class is, again, the smallest at 1,748, but we do have, and most of our secondary grades are smaller than our elementary school grades, so there's growth moving up through our system. But getting, and then kind of a comparison between the two, the largest grade and our smallest grade, there's over a 330, almost a 330 student difference between the two. Getting to kind of some demographic information about our student body, kind of a surprise, the amount of difference between male and female, that there's almost a 900 student difference between the number of males to the number of females. Kind of think it would be equal, but about 50/50, but it's not. Ethnic distribution, this is actually, as we've talked about over previous years, there, the Alatha School District is becoming more and more ethnically diverse. This year, our white population went below 80%, it's down to 78.7%. Other races, the Hispanic, the Hispanic ethnicity continues to grow. There were actually some declines in even the raw numbers of minority groups there. As you can see, with the red line there, the African, just the raw number of African-American population went down in our schools. Also, the Native American population doesn't make up very much under 100 students, but it did go down slightly as well. And I guess one thing to look at when cautioning and looking at this chart, it's all on five-year increments, except for the last year. It goes 95 to 2,000, to 2005, and then to 2006. So as you look at the chart and the lines there, the growth that you're seeing from 2005 to 2006 does represent just one year, while the other growth represents five years. So, the Hispanic population is not slowing, the increase in the Hispanic population isn't slowing down, it's just that, again, it's just a one-year increase versus the five-year increase previously before that. Other thing that's kind of an amazing statistic there is that our ELL population, the rate that it is increasing, from last year to this year, our ELL population has gone up by 370 students. If you go back to 2002, we were only at 369 students. So in that three-year period between 2002 and 2005, the population went up by 750. This year, we went up by 350 in just one year. And that there are 42 different languages being spoken in our ELL programs, and there are over 61 different languages being spoken in the students of our, the homes of our So again, this just goes to further show the amount of diversity that's occurring in the Alatha School District. This is kind of, we provided some preliminary information at the Joint School Board-City Council meeting about poverty in the district, or about the amount of free and reduced lunch. In 2005, our number was at 15.9%, or almost 16%. This year, we're up to 16.8. So the number and percentage of students who are qualifying for free and reduced lunch continues to increase. And the range of our schools is from 1.1%, so all of our schools have at least some students qualifying for free and reduced lunch, up to 69.8%. This is also an increase. Last year, the school with the highest percentage was only at 63% of its pop, only, was that 63% of its population? Now it's up to 69.8. And then along with special education, we've got 3,630 students that have IEPs. The IEPs could be for such things as speech, deaf, hard of hearing, or even, and gifted service. But 11.2% of the students, 11.2% of our student body has some type of disability that requires an IEP, and then 2.96, 2.9%, almost 3%, have IEPs for gifted services, that they're in gifted, the class programs at the district. Now getting to the number of new students, these are students that are brand-new to our district. Not, doesn't include kindergartners, doesn't include the non-graded students, and doesn't return to students returning to our district. There were over 900 students that were returning to our district that aren't in this slide, that were in our district, left for some reason, foreign exchange, moved to another state, moved to a different school, but came back. But we've got almost 1,200 students that are brand-new, just stepping foot into the Alatha District for the first time. You know, these numbers go to the mobility of our students. And of that, as kind of be expected, a lot of them are in kindergarten, first, second, and third grade. By fourth grade, it really starts to level out. Another kind of thing there, pretty consistent, fourth, fifth, sixth, eighth, ninth, tenth, eleventh, all have about the same number of students moving into them. And there were even 60 new seniors coming to the Alatha School District for the very first time. And then, obviously, once we talk about growth, everybody wants to know, where are these people coming from? Well, for at least our new students, we can definitely answer that question. That 42% of our new students are coming from out of state. They're moving to Johnson County into Alatha from another state, not Kansas, not Missouri. 15% are coming to Johnson County from, are coming from Kansas outside of Johnson County. 22% are coming from within Johnson County. So, almost 75% of it are coming from those three areas. 9% from private schools in Johnson County, 2% are homeschoolers coming to public schools, 7% are from a different country, 7% of our population, of the new students, or of that 1,800 number are from a new country. And just kind of looking at, again, reason, one of the reasons why our diversity is increasing in our new students, aren't white. Only 63% of them are white, 14% Hispanic, 11% African-American, 5% Asian, and 5.1% multiracial. And 8, 8 and 1/2% of them are requiring special ed services. And I think Mr. Diener is going to talk to you about, and the one thing that I forgot to mention as we were going through there, that Gary told me to stress, was that the numbers there, I forgot, was that the number of 25,590 students is a headcount number. That is bodies in the school. It isn't an FTE, that is actual people in the seats.
Thank you, Chris. Which is the lead-in for the information, in that when we talk about all the number of new students that we have in our district, then obviously, maybe one of the questions that comes to mind is what's the fiscal impact that that's going to have on the operating budget that the board approved back in August? I brought a slide up from what Chris provided earlier, where he was showing 940 students as a headcount. The reality of that budget impact is that it only has an impact of 807 students, and that's the full-time equivalency, when we look at taking out of the kindergarten students, the part-time students, and all the other things that go into developing that FTE. But even with the 807, we have to understand that that plays into the total FTE that goes into the number that is used for the financial formula in the state of Kansas and how we get our allocation. That transfers to 44,000 versus the 25,591 headcount that we saw earlier. But we also have to understand that there are other weighting factors: bilingual education hours, vocational hours, at-risk students, transportation. All of those things also play into the formula for the state aid, of which that amounts to 9,000. So when you put the 24,000, of which is the actual, the FTE, along with the 9,000, getting roughly 33,000, we see that only 24,000 of that from the students has that kind of an impact. And so when we look at that increase of 807 students FTE, and compare that with the 750 that we built the budget around, that is an additional 57 students, but that only has an impact on our budget of less than 0.3%. Lot of other factors come into play, and those factors aren't totally known yet. We have a very good feel for them, those hours, but we're still processing that, working with a kids program that our technology department, with readers' leadership, works with the state. That's going to go back and forth for the next couple months, as far as refining that, clarifying that, and the state's trying to make sure that all the students that we counted weren't also counted by some other school district in the state of Kansas. And when they find abnormalities like that, then we're trying to work them back and forth. And so that's still in play. I think the bottom line that we'd like for the board to realize at this point in time is that, in reality, there's very little flexibility in our current operating budget. It's basically what it is, and we did not see significant changes in what we looked at in the beginning and what we're now seeing based on the September 20th enrollment. We'll continue to monitor this, and it will be finalized after about February of next year, when we have a final audit. As far as budget development, moving forward, for the month of November, what we'd like to do is provide the board with a four-year operating budget analysis. That's sort of a kickoff as to where we are, where we've been, where we've been first, where we are, and what we're looking at in the next few years. And finally, in December, the kickoff, we're basically starting over again. It feels like we just stopped, but we're starting again, and we'll be looking at the budget goals that the board would like to set, revisiting the calendar and the cash balance reserve goals that we've been working with, and want to refresh our memories on that and move forward. So, at this time, that's the information that we would have on the September 20 impact of the enrollment counts on our budgets.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Diener. Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Gary. Our next item has, deals with junior high enrollment growth. I believe Mr. Grohlup's going to present this item as well.
Tonight, I'm also here to talk to you about junior high information. As Dr. Ove said earlier, the board has received a few... The board has received a few reports on junior high enrollment, and so we're here to update that information that has been presented to you now that we've got the finalized numbers from September twentieth, and show you what impact that has had on our enrollments. As we just stated, the district had its second-largest increase ever, at nine hundred and forty students. But at the junior high level, last year we were at five thousand four hundred and seventy-three students. This year, we're at five thousand five oh three, which is only a thirty-student increase, or point five, point five percent increase in the past year. And what, and why that is, or looking at it historically, it's a very low increase for the district there. We had only a thirty-student increase this year. The year before that, we only had a seventy, seventy-two student increase. The year before that, though, you go back to two years, and we had a two hundred and sixty-nine student increase. And what we wanted to just kind of show you is a little bit of the history of why our junior high population these past few years has increased so slowly. What you'll see, and what you kind of saw from the last presentation there, was that our current eighth-grade class is our second-smallest grade in the school district, the smallest being the senior class, which is generally speaking your smallest grade. The eighth-grade class, though, at eighteen hundred, has grown, back in two thousand and three, it was at sixteen seventy-three, and it has grown at a rate to be expected for a grade in the Latha School District. It just started small, and has continued to be small. And that does happen sometimes, but typically, nature has a way of balancing things out, and a small grade is either followed by, or precedes, a large grade, and it balances out. With this, with this year's current eighth-grade class, there really isn't a large grade anywhere around it. And a matter of fact, the seventh grade is, is the, is, is just a little bit bigger. As we've talked about previously, how the biggest grades in our school district are usually the youngest grades, in the junior high level right now, that's not the case. The largest grade in our junior high system right now is the ninth grade at eighteen hundred and sixty-seven students. And so we're just, and so what's been happening at our junior highs is that there's been a shifting of the population. We've had four junior highs that have lost population, and four junior highs that have gained population. Sometimes the loss of population's a good thing, such as the California Trail going down from eight fifty to eight thirty-nine. And then we've had other junior highs, the four other junior highs that have increased the population. You look at Prairie Trail, it's gone up by a hundred and seventy-seven students in the past two years. Chisholm Trail's gone up by sixty-seven students. And even Santa Fe Trail's increased by twenty-eight students over the past two years. And what we can, and the surprising thing in this was that actually, between two thousand and five and two thousand and six, our biggest gaining elem, elem, or excuse me, junior high school was Santa Fe Trail. It went up by fifty-six students. Prairie Trail was the second-biggest at fifty-five, but Santa Fe Trail wasn't projected to grow, was projected to grow minimally. Prairie Trail was expected to grow a lot, by over a hundred students. Prairie Trail definitely didn't grow by, as, as expected, it only grew, as we were saying, by fifty-five students. And Santa Fe Trail grow, grew quite a lot, especially considering what it was projected to do.
Mr. Grohl, excuse me, what, just in a nutshell, what's causing Santa Fe to be contrary to forecasts?
We are still investigating that. I can't give you an answer at this time what it, what it is. What we're starting to look at is transfer students, to see what kind of impact transfer students have at Santa Fe Trail. Also, looking at, grade-wise, there wasn't a huge increase in the grades. Growth-wise, there wasn't very much development in the Santa Fe Trail area, so we're going to have to go back in and look at transfers and demographics of the, of the population that's there. But we can get you that information here in the next, next few weeks. And so, what we can tell you also is that shifts in population are to be expected in the junior high. This is the enrollment history for Pioneer Trail. As you can see, our junior highs have a pattern of increasing, and then we open new junior highs, such as when California Trail opened, having their enrollment decline, going through periods where the population kind of stabilized for a while, and then Prairie Trail again is growing ever so slightly over the past four years. We think this population, this is going to be happening at our junior highs, that all of our junior highs over the next three years are going to, are going to grow, or excuse me, seven of the eight junior highs. And the reason why is, again, going back to this similar chart showing you what we think's going to happen over the next three years, the first column details the current enrollments of our grades. As we've talked about, you know, and we keep coming back to this point, our biggest grades are our youngest grades, and, and our grades are going to be growing. So that by two thousand and, by two thousand and eight, we're going to have our first two thousand person grade in the, in the, in the junior highs, and by two thousand and nine, all three of our grades will be over two thousand students. This is due to, again, the larger classes in the elementary school, as well as continued residential growth in the area, which is, the next slides highlighting that growth, or the elementary schools, and then the growth. We've showed you this slide four, of where the building permits occurred last year in two thousand and five, the location of all the building permits in the school district. Prairie Trail had sixty percent of all the building permits issued were in this, were in the Prairie Trail area. Fifty-eight percent of all new single-family homes were in, were in Prairie Trail's attendance The impact of these elementary, of these larger grades, as well as the residential growth, is shown here in this table. And again, just to kind of draw your attention, what we're projecting over the next three years is that all of our junior highs, except Frontier Trail, we're projecting to grow. Some moderately, but all of them have, all of them increasing. What we'd like to kind of focus on is the, the two schools that are going to be growing the most there, Prairie Trail and Chisholm Trail. And one other thing that we want to talk about here real briefly there, is, is the impact of the slowing housing market. We've, I kind of looked this up here just real briefly there, comparing last year's numbers, what we projected for Prairie Trail's growth. When you received a similar presentation back in February, we're projecting that Prairie Trail by the, by September oh eight would be at a thousand fifty students. Due to some slowing housing trends, do it, do we, also due to some changing demographics or demographics not happening as expected, we've reduced that number by over eighty students, down to nine hundred and seventy. And then for, and the other thing that I want to stress is the, the number, the September oh nine numbers and all these numbers are contingent upon the boundaries and everything remaining as they are. Prairie Trail, you've seen this picture before, is in the northwest part of our district there. Schools that feed it are Manchester Park, Meadow Lane, Cedar Creek, Ravenwood, Fairview, and only, I got, just go back and remind the board that only about, only half of Meadow Lane's attendance area is within the Prairie Trail attendance area, the other part of Meadow Lane goes to Santa Fe Trail. This is kind of a break, a break, grade-by-grade breakdown of Prairie Trail throughout its history. It opened in two thousand and four with six hundred and twenty-two students. This year, it's at seven hundred and ninety-nine students. We're showing continued growth of the school, but rather than, before we were talking about growth in the hundreds of students, a hundred this year, a hundred next year, a hundred the year after that, we've revised that estimate down to, to growth of only, only sixty-six students next year, a hundred students the year after that, and a hundred students the year after that. We're still expecting the growth to come, we're just delaying that growth due to slowing trends right now. We're still expecting the growth to come, though, because of the large number of active subdivisions in its attendance area, the large number of undeveloped land in the attendance area. And based on those factors, we feel that the growth is going to come, just, it's going to be delayed some, not as fast as originally anticipated. Just, just again, shows the schools in a different format there, what feeds the Prairie Trail, as we talked about, Cedar Creek, Fairview, Manchester Park, Ravenwood, and part of Meadow Lane, the part west of the railroad tracks. Prairie Trail and the, and the school capacity scorecard that we gave you last couple of weeks ago was identified as a priority issue, and with the need to look at enrollment relief options for, for both the short-term and the long-term relief for that school, and that enrollment relief can really consist of the four options that we've, that are kind of what I would call the standard options for the school. The do-nothing option there, which would be increased staffing levels and class sizes. We're still in the process of calculating the core class size of Prairie Trail for the two thousand and six school year, but last year it was at twenty-three point four students. Just because, and, and just a cautionary tale, we are calculating that number, but I don't want you to assume that that number has necessarily gone up. We, even though the population of the school did go up by fifty, fifty-five students, that doesn't necessarily mean that the class size went up. And so I just want you to stress that, not to make that assumption, that, that twenty-three point four, that it's a higher number than twenty-three point four. Build an addition to the school. The cost of any addition to Prairie Trail is going to be dependent upon the amount of classrooms that are put on the building, but there's no money allocated in capital outlay for this, and an addition couldn't be in place any sooner than two thousand and eight, at the absolute earliest. And it may be longer than that, depending upon where the money would come from for that addition. Boundary adjustment. There are two junior highs that are joined Prairie Trail, Oregon Trail and Santa Fe Trail. Oregon Trail is projected to grow over the next, next three years, going from six hundred and nine students this year to almost seven hundred and ninety students by, by oh nine, by oh nine and ten. Santa Fe Trail is at six hundred right now, showing some, some growth by, by oh nine oh ten, up to six hundred and twenty-nine students.
Mr. Grohl, our, our growth book that we received, didn't that show Santa Fe Trail as a long-term forecast for declining?
It might have. I mean, what we've been doing, the, the, the growth forecasts that were included in, in the growth book, were based on last year's numbers, didn't reflect the information that has, this year's enrollments at Prairie Trail, as well as the enrollments that feed Prairie Trail. And so, since the meeting two weeks ago, we've been in the process of updating, of, of trying to get all of our information updated, we're preparing updates for the growth book there that will reflect, reflect this forecast. And the other option for Prairie Trail is to construct a new junior high school. The district does own land for, for a junior high. Funding for a, for a junior high school would have to come from a future bond issue, and the soonest it could open is two thousand and nine. The sites the district owns are, again, up in Lenex at about Ninety-Fifth and Monticello, and then a hundred and twenty-seventh and Lake Shore. These are both forty-eight, approximately forty-acre parcels. Any questions before we move on to Prairie Trail? Or, on Prairie Trail, before we move to Chisholm Trail? Chisholm Trail, the other fast-growing school in our school district, serves the entire southern boundary of our district. Everything south of a hundred and fifty-first street goes to Chisholm Trail. That is also, that's four elementary schools, Brougham, Arbor Creek, Chisholm, or excuse me, Sunnyside and Scarborough. Next year, it will be five schools with Madison, with the addition of Madison Place down there with the little flag. What's happening at Chisholm Trail is also a continued, a very steady, not as fast increase as what's happened at, at Prairie Trail. What we're showing there is a thirty-student increase, actually only a four-student increase next year. But basically, a thirty to forty student consistent increase at Chisholm Trail. Increase at Chisholm Trail isn't due to new residential construction like at Prairie Trail, what it's due to is just the size of the elementary schools that are in this area. Arbor, as we've talked about before, and you can see here, this is updated with the two new enrollment numbers there. Arbor Creek and Sunnyside are two of our four biggest, or two of our five biggest elementary schools, and they're both going to Chisholm Trail. In two years, the fourth-grade class will be going on to Chisholm Trail, and they're, and they've got three hundred and fifty-four students in that grade. So if you, if you go out five years there, you're looking at over a thousand, it would be over a thousand students in the junior high schools, or in, in Chisholm Trail. So there, so the growth at Chisholm is due to the incoming classes, not to new residential growth in the, in the area. Chisholm Trail and the balance scorecard was identified as an emerging issue. It's recommended an enrollment relief plan be in place for the two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine school year. And the relief plan could consist of three standard options, the only one that it wouldn't be is build the new junior high. You could increase the class sizes. Right now, their, their average core class sizes was twenty-two point five students in oh five. Again, we're working on updating that information. Build an addition. Any addition would depend, the cost would depend upon the size of an addition, or a boundary adjustment. Schools that are joined Chisholm Trail are Frontier Trail, Indian Trail, and Oregon Trail. We've kind of talked about Oregon Trail, it also adjoins Prairie Trail, it's growing, going to grow, we're projecting it's grow by over a hundred and eighty students in the next three years. Indian Trail has been declining, but we're showing that decline to kind of stop and actually reverse to slow growth there, getting up to five hundred and fifteen students. Frontier Trail continuing to decline, have, have that decline decrease some, and just kind of, I think we've talked about this at the last meeting there, but the Frontier Trail's decline is due to, is also, just like Chisholm Trail's growth is due to the schools that feed it, Frontier Trail's decline is due to the schools that feed it. Green Springs, Brougham, Briarwood, and Black Bob all feed, I screwed up there, Black Bob, Tomahawk. Let me start again, the four schools that feed Frontier Trail are Tomahawk, Black Bob, Briarwood, and Green Springs. All four of those schools have experienced some declines over the past few years. That decline is now be, starting to be felt at the junior high level. And then Chisholm Trail at night, again, as we talked about, is, is growing. And what we just kind of wanted to highlight there is their enrollment's three years out from now, that should a boundary change be, be the board's preferred option of dealing with Chisholm Trail, there are a couple of different boundary options that could be available to the board for that, for that enrollment relief. Any questions on Chisholm Trail? In summary, the enrollment increases have been below average for the past two years. As we said in your board summary there, the average increase of the board, and I wrote it down and didn't bring it up here, was about a hundred and sixty students, its five-year average. So a thirty increase and a seventy-student increase the past two years are, are way below average. We're seeing a great deal of shifting of our population, but the, the overall enrollment of our junior highs is expected to increase, and continually increase over the next three years, and that Prairie Trail and Chisholm Trail are going to be the most affected by these enrollment changes.
Thank you, Mr. Grohl. Look, in deference, board, to our guests that are here for recognitions and awards, we'll take a break for ten minutes and then come back for that. And Chris, if you'll remain available in case there are any other questions on your presentation, we'll pick up right after that. So, let's recess for about ten minutes.